Okay, I'm going to call to order the April 21st, 2016 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Please rise for the pledge. Mr. McPhillips will do this with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd please have a moment of silence for those serving both at home and abroad. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to announcements. Before we start announcements, I just wanted to say that we had a brief executive session to discuss personnel in real estate prior to the night's meeting. And announcements, I'll go to Ms. Frescatour.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, residents of Warminster. I'd like to tell you about the Rubber Ducky Regatta sponsored by our rec center. Duck tickets are on sale now or online at the Township Building, Library, or Rec, and at the Citadel Federal Credit Union. Duck ticket numbers correspond to the ducks that go into the water at Kemper Park, May 15th at 1:00. It's a lot of fun. You can bring your family, pack a lunch, put little duckies in the water, and you can win cash prizes. You need not to be present to win. The Parks and Rec and Run Bucks is hosting the Second Annual Bucks County Mile at WCP on Friday, May 20th, starting at 6:00 PM to raise funds for park projects. It's only a mile. Anyone can do it. For information or to register, www-runbucks.com/Warmminster. The Community Park Pickup, part of the Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful program, will continue through May 30th. Volunteers are invited to clean up public areas in the community, parks, retention basins, schools, to make our community more beautiful. Volunteers receive safety vests, gloves, trash bags, and certificates. Just call Parks and Recs to register. Parks and Rec has discount tickets available. All tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more information and prices, check the website. They have movie tickets, discount premier movie tickets to Regal, Edwards, United Artists Theater for $9.50. Amusement park and local attraction tickets have been ordered and they go on sale at the end of April. Parks and Rec is selling the 2016 dog licenses and are taking new applications and renewals for the Bark Park. New season started for the community-supported agriculture with Crawford Organics with fresh produce, eggs, yogurt are available each week. The Rec is a pickup point each Tuesday. For more information, contact Crawford Organics. Park restrooms are open, but the Bark Park Fountain will remain closed until the end of April. For more information, contact the Parks and Recreation Department at (215) 443-5428, or visit the Township website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatour.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Monroe.
I actually do have one this time. I spoke with East West Karate. They'd like everyone to know that East West Karate is having a 5K fun run and kids ninja obstacle course, which benefits the Yellow Ribbon Fund. The date is Saturday, May 21st, 2016, in the Warminster Community Park. It's 1100 Veterans Way. The registration opens at 8:00 AM, and the race starts at 9:00 AM. I'll just read the brief little description. It's, "East West Karate Family Martial Arts and Fitness is pleased to support the not-for-profit Yellow Ribbon Fund on Saturday, May 21st with family-friendly races and activities for adults and children of all ages. Young children race to win against a ninja in an untimed 100-meter tiny tiger trot. Kids finish their ninja adventure with a fun fitness obstacle course. Kids and adults may choose to race in an untimed one-mile or 5K run-walk and put the fund in fundraiser proceeds going to the veterans of the armed services." Again, that is May 21st at 8:00 AM. For more information, you can go to www.rontheday.com, or any specific questions, you can contact Ms. Laura at misslara@eastwestkarateandfitness.com, (215) 441-8100. That is all I have from the session.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Announcement from the library. The Friends of Warminster Library's fundraiser will be taking place this Saturday, April 23rd, at 2:00 PM in the library's large community room. The fundraiser will feature an actress impersonating Julia Child. Tickets are currently on sale at the library circulation desk for $10, and sold at the door for $15. Don't miss what's sure to be a fun event with light refreshments and lots of laugh when Julia says, "Bon appétit." And from the Ben Wilson Senior Activities Center, the Red Cross will be conducting a blood drive on Monday, April 25th, from 2:00 to 7:00, accepting walk-ins. So you can right walk in on Monday, on Monday, April 25th, and donate blood. And then finally, on April 30th, will be the next National Prescription Drug Drop-Off Day. But here in Warminster, every day is a drop-off day. So please, if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications in your medicine cabinets, please head over to the police station, drop them off at the bin. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to announce two new businesses in town since our last meeting. First, All-Season Comfort Control at 665 Cathard Street, and Batteries and Bulbs at 509 York Road. As always, we thank these businesses for choosing to call Warminster home and wish them the best of luck here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowley. The only announcement I have is this coming Sunday, at 12:00, the doors open for the First Annual Peace Valley Holistic Center. Coach Bag Bingo, Designer Bag Bingo. The folks up at the Peace Valley Holistic Center were really helpful to me as I made my way through my battle with cancer. And it gives me great pleasure to support them, and I volunteered to serve as the MC for the event. There are still tickets available. It's $35 at the door, and it is at the VFW on Lewis Drive. Doors open at 12:00 on Sunday. So if anyone's interested, please do come out. And that is the only announcement I have. So I'm going to move on. Presentations, we don't have any tonight, so I'm going to move right to public comment. Township residents have the opportunity this time to comment on any non-agenda items. Subject to the five-minute guideline is recognized by the chair. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Andrew Dixon. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee, and I'm President, 326 Calmia Street. We had our last meeting the last Monday of the previous month, March, whatever day that was, and it was March 25th. And at that meeting, one of our board members decided and was able to invite some people to speak with us about the water issue that everyone, I think, at this point is fairly familiar with, about what's, what happened, you know, with the fluorocarbons in the water. And ultimately, I'm sure you've all heard by now, by the end of that meeting, we as a committee were fairly convinced by, by the people who came, particularly the Delaware River Keeper Network, I'll give them a shout-out, that they were very convincing and passionate about the, the two things that impressed me were, one, that the standard which the, the current EPA standard for the amounts of these fluorocarbons in the water is .4 parts per billion, and yet, most accepted science at this point would say that .1 is the only safe level. And so that, there was that, and that another town in New York had a lot of success by doing a relatively simple thing of simply writing a letter addressed to the EPA. And the US Navy, they have the exact same problem that we have, and that those two agencies basically responding to a simple letter were able to step up and provide bottled drinking water to those residents of HUSIC, New York, who requested it, and also immediately reduce the EPA guideline in that town from .4 parts per billion to .1 parts per billion, which then triggered a bunch of cleanup that was being paid for by the Navy and the EPA. So we thought, okay, pretty low-risk move, write a letter, and they do what they do. It's maybe a high reward. So we're here to basically, I'm on behalf of the committee, to recommend that the board take that action.
I'd like to commend our Environmental Advisory Council for having the courage to take this step on behalf of our residents until late, our residents' fear concerning the fluorinated carbons in our water, chemicals in our water. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our Township Manager, Mr. Steven Weisner, to refer the letters to the EPA and the Navy mentioned by Andrew Dixon. I was happy to attend that meeting, and by instead, we were able to help facilitate this resolution, and I think the letters would be, give, allay the fears of our residents, provide drinking water to anybody on the private wells, or anybody else that would ask for it. So I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Weisner.
All right. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Monroe, discussion from the board? Seeing none, any discussion from the public?
First of all, thank you for serves as someone who served as Chairman of the Warminster EAC. I appreciate your efforts, and I think this would be appropriate action to take. So yeah, I'd be happy to, uh...
Excellent. Excellent.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I definitely, I don't want, I don't want people to get the wrong idea that we're expecting to receive the same benefits at HUSIC, that, but we're, you know, we want to add our name to the course that Congressman Fitzpatrick and Congressman Meehan have already done.
Right.
So I'm happy to support this resolution to draft a letter stating, hey, don't forget about us and all this, because now, as you see, this PFO and PFOSing is starting to grow into a much larger, it started Warminster and Horsham, and it's getting bigger and bigger.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we stay front and center.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd like to add is, the thing that we're doing different than what the congressmen have all done, they're asking when the chemical was there, what the adverse effects are. All we're basically doing is, is taking immediate action by leveling, by lowering the level of the chemicals by adding carbon. The Navy will take care of that, and by giving bottled water to our residents that are on the private wells.
Right, right. And even if they, even my, my only thing is, if it's currently at 4.4 parts per billion, right?
Right.
And if you want to lower it to one, our testing's already below the one parts-per-billion testing, so I don't know if we're going to get the same benefit, but I think it's absolutely worth, worth, worth bringing up and addressing, and, because who knows? 10 years ago, nobody knew what a PFO and PFOS was.
Exactly.
So let's, let's do our due diligence and do what we're supposed to do here, and let's do the best thing for the community.
So we're talking about, if we're talking about a resolution, I'd like to hear what, Mr. Savona?
Oh, not a resolution, letters.
Letters.
The letter, okay.
At any rate...
No, I, listen, I'm very interested in having the Township at least make the EPA aware that we do have this concern. Obviously, we don't supply the water. That's the Warminster authority, but from a general public interest standpoint, I think it is a good idea for us to weigh in and ask that the EPA and the Navy take any and all steps that they can take, that are reasonably justified to provide relief to the residents.
Yeah, I mean, we were basically persuaded that this is an action that's...
As you said, it's no risk.
Yeah, no risk, and if they, whatever they do, they do, but it puts some pressure on them to at least take a look at this and do as right by us as was done by HUSIC, New York, right? So, that's it. And I do want to thank Kathy, who was very helpful that evening and helped me kind of guide the conversation, and Steve, who also was there and very helpful. And hopefully, it just, it results in, you know, people at least getting a sense that there is, that we're doing everything that we can, and we're talking to the right people to get things done.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yes, there any further comment from the board on the motion? Seeing none, is there any comment from the public on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Excellent. Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, the next up is the consent agenda. Mr. Weisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just read briefly the items that are on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the March 17th Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. Second is to appoint Gary Smith of Keystone Municipal Services as our Deputy Zoning Officer. Gary is here tonight, along with his boss, Rich O'Brien. Keystone is our contractor, and Gary is an employee of that, that firm, and he came tonight to introduce himself as well. So thank you, Gary. And then the next item is to appoint Rich O'Brien, who's sitting next to him, as our floodplain administrator, and Gary then as the Deputy Floodplain Administrator. These are required positions to administer our floodplain ordinance. Number D is the seasonal golf manual update. We have a seasonal golf manual for all the employees that come to the golf course and work there. Our golf course is open, and anyone wanting to golf, it's, it's prime time. Golf, the golf course is really looking good. So this update to the seasonal golf manual has been approved by Scott Blissman. It's, has Personnel Matters in it, and that's why we have Scott Blissman look at it, and he's approved it. Prepared by Megan Weaver as well. Thank you, Megan, for all your hard work on putting that together. Item E is Pima designation of a Township agent for the Pima Winter Storm Event, Jonas. So that was the name, Jonas was the name of the storm that happened in January. Joe Velton, who's in the back, our Emergency Management Coordinator, worked very hard to put together the application for receiving grant funds for this, and I'm happy to say, we're hopeful to receive, and it looks like we'll receive a substantial amount of reimbursement through Joe's effort. So thank you, Joe. Item F, consider release of an in-ground swimming pool escrow. These are all routine releases. G is another swimming pool escrow in the amount of $113.94. First item was $101.51. Item H, consider release of a third swimming pool escrow in the amount of $45.80. I, drainage permit escrow in the amount of 200, release of a drainage permit escrow in the amount of $253.27. And item J, consider Warminster Plaza, 606 York Road Land Development, release number three from escrow. These are reviewed by our Township Engineer, and the amount of $900. Item K, consider 222 Norristown Road Land Development, release number one, and an escrow in the amount of $101,97.0. And that's contingent upon recording of the necessary agreements for that particular plan. We have those agreements in the back office for your signature, too. Item L is consider release, number five, final escrow from the account, County View Land Development Phase Two project in the amount of $251,342.46. Mr. Kennard, Mr. Savona, and I had an opportunity to talk about this today, and this one would be contingent upon the finalization of a stormwater basin management...
Maintenance.
Maintenance protocol?
Guidelines.
Guidelines?
Guidelines.
Okay, guidelines. We want to make sure that the guidelines we have are clear, that we can communicate that to the homeowners association, who will have that responsibility to maintain. We were able to find those through Mike's help today, we were able, and Craig's as well, and Karen Holshizer's, we were able to find some, some good guidelines, which we think will be sufficient to ensure that the basin is maintained adequately.
And this is the final release for County View?
This is the final release. This is it, and the guidelines that Mike found, and I looked at them before I came in tonight, it's all tied to the state Pennsylvania BMP manuals guidelines. So we're actually going to follow the state guidelines, help the HOA a little bit, when the Hovnanian retrofitted the basin, to address one last issue on the Township end. I know a couple of minor things left, but that closes out on the Township's end, and I can work directly with the HOA on that.
Punch list is complete.
That's it.
Finally, we're out.
It says final, so.
Okay.
There's no, there's no improvements being dedicated to the Township, so that's why this is final. There's no 18-month maintenance secured that you would see in other projects. Roads, stormwater facilities, everything is privately owned.
Okay, excellent. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Several.
Mr. McPhillips, second.
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next up is the Treasurers Report. Mr. Monroe?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept. Bill list for period ending April 21st in the amount of $1,625,884.86. A supplemental list for March 30th with a total of $244,085.88, as well as March transfers ending March 31st with a total of $181,816.63.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions and comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. We'll go move on to the March financial statement. Mr. Weisner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The March financial statement is out, and I'd just like to go over the highlights. Our revenues are trending positively, and I'm encouraged to say that. And I'd like to thank Linda Major and Ginny Garing's, all their hard work on putting together these financial statements. It is a monumental task that they do each month. It takes a lot of, lot of time, and they put a lot of effort into it and pride. So first items are the general fund balance decreased, which is expected in the first three months of the year. Our tax revenues start coming in in April, and in earnest, and we'll see that it starts increasing from then. The next item I'd like to bring to your attention is real estate transfer taxes. That's line 01310100. We're $348,000 higher than March 2015 collections. And we talk about the budgeting all the time here at the Township because it's so important. We have said, we have, we have a deficit budgeted for this year. We acknowledge that. It's about $760,000, so we're trying to make up that deficit. And we talk about how we budget all the time, and I think it's important that we do. We budget conservatively, meaning that I take a conservative approach on revenues. I don't budget at an acceptable range at the high end. I budget at the low end on an acceptable range for revenues, and at a higher end, at an acceptable range for expenses. That way, we hope that there's no surprises at the end of the year, and that our deficit isn't greater than the 760 that is currently projected. Now, that $760,000 deficit comes from our reserve balances, which we do have, so we're, we're not uncomfortable with it. My hope is, if by budgeting conservatively, at the end of the year, we'll make up that amount. And we're trending to do that. So, real estate transfer taxes, for those that may not know, is an amount that is paid whenever there's a real estate transaction in the Township. So if you were to buy a new house, you pay a real estate transfer tax split with the school district. It is incredibly difficult to determine or estimate what that would be. And when there's a large sale, we get a large influx of revenue. And there was, in fact, a large sale, which happened. One of our larger apartment complexes in the Township was sold in the last month, and we got a substantial amount, actually $285,000 in one check. So we've had three large sales in the Township so far. By the end of April, we will have fully realized all of our revenue projections for real estate transfer tax. That's great, but we have to make up a $760,000 deficit as well. So, just to give you that caveat. Earned income taxes, I'm very pleased to say, are trending $135,000 more than March 2015. We have a new earned income tax collector, or relatively new, and that's Keystone, and they're doing a great job. And each year, they get better and better. That is a cumbersome tax to collect, so we're thankful that the, we're seeing that trend go up. Mercantile taxes, business privilege taxes, and local services taxes, also trending higher than what we have received last year, and my budget is still conservative on those. Cable franchise fees have raised, increased by $8,449 since March of 2015. I like that trend as well. I would expect that to continue up as well. Revenues in the general fund, Linda Major points out that revenues in the general fund are less than last year by $1,077,000. So you may be wondering what that is. When we did this budget, I had anticipated, we do the budget and start the budget in September, and I anticipated that we would need to borrow 1.5 million in what's called a tax anticipation note. As the year progressed, and our fund balance, and I looked at our fund balance, and then, when it came down to December, I realized we didn't need that. And I never foreborrowing money if we don't need it. So we, we analyzed the numbers with Ginny and Linda Major's help, and we found that we didn't need to borrow that 1.5 million, so we didn't. We saved, Ginny saved the taxpayers about 7,000 bucks. So when you take that out, our revenues are actually trending $433,000 higher.
Awesome.
Okay? Insurance liability is over budget, and this is because of an insurance policy that we had to acquire for Shenandoah Woods. That was not anticipated. Did you have a question, James?
No, no.
Okay, gotcha. Golf course. Always want to highlight the golf course. We had great weather this year so far. Knock on wood, and we're hopeful that we'll have great weather in the fall. If we have a fall and a spring season that are good, that means everything. It means the difference between profitability and not profitability. We're trending $100,000 higher than last year at this time. But if you remember, the golf course had ice on it through the end of March. So we had three good months that we were able to use it, and each month, and we actually have sales in January. Golf course is open year-round if you can play on it. So. Pro Shop line item, there's an adjustment of, there's a, it's showing a deficit. We believe that there's a change to an accounting process there that we need to correct. It's off by $1,700. And I just want to remind everybody that we are MMO. We always talk about the MMO as being a challenge in the Township. The MMO is $1.7 million, and we're using a technique called smoothing, which reduces our minimum municipal obligation for our pension plan to help us spread out the deficit that we have in our pension. So we budgeted this year to put an additional $285,000 in, if we have it available. It looks like we'll have that available, so I'm happy to report.
It's good to hear.
And then the last item is, I think that's it. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weisner. I also wanted to comment that Bobby Loftus, our tax collector, wanted to stop in tonight, but she had a previous engagement, but she wanted to let us know that things are extremely busy over there. And I know they are, because I live down the street from the tax office. Her car is there around the clock these days, so I know she's extremely busy, which is good for us, bringing some revenue in.
She's here frequently, early, early in the morning. Ginny and her are early risers, and they're usually the first two in the Township, and she's here dropping off money or receipts, not, not the actual money, but the receipts from the bank.
Not dropping the bag off?
Right.
Okay, that's good to hear.
So we appreciate all of Bobby's efforts, she, in doing the tax cars.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Steve.
Great job to Stephen, your staff. Wonderful job. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is unfinished business. Consider Act 537 Plan Amendment for closing the NAWC Sewage Treatment Facility Resolution 2016-20. Steve Weisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Nolan is here. He's the engineer for CKS for the, for the Sewer and Water Authority. I'll do a brief, and we saw this before, and Joe, you're welcome to speak as well. If I say anything that you're an engineer and I'm not an engineer, so sometimes I, I don't explain it correctly, but basically, we have two sewage treatment plants in the Township. One of them is a newer plant that is on the former Navy Base property, and it was built to handle new development that would be coming into the Township as the Navy Base got redeveloped. Right now, a small amount of flow goes there, but it costs a lot of money to operate that plant. So Joe and his team, and Tim Hagie from the Sewer Authority, recommended that they divert that flow to our existing plant, which is known as...
Log College.
Log College Plant, which has the capacity to accept the flow, and it's a very easy matter of simply redirecting it through a force main to that plant. That saves the Sewer Authority a lot of money, because the operational costs for the old plant are not then incurred. We're thankful that they have that new plant, because that shows, we're all about economic development here in Warminster Township, and having that capacity is a plus to the Township. A large user, or a large person, a large, not person, but a large business that makes...
A large person is a lot more useful.
That's a good, good point, too. We're hopeful that by having that plant in the location that it is, as we see development come, we can show that we've got the sewer capacity to handle it. And, and that is a big selling point to developing in the Township. So, but, we don't want to have the Sewer Authority incur all those additional operating costs for a very small flow. So we did a, Joe's team did a special study. The 537 Plan is owned by the Township. What that means is, we are the ones, the Township supervisors are in charge of deciding which areas of the Township have sewer, sewer use. So that's why it's on your agenda tonight. So you need to approve this, because it's your 537 Plan. The Authority then accomplishes your 537 Plan by building the plants and taking care of the sewage. So if you approve this tonight, which was available for public inspection for 30 days, we had it at the front counter, we had it over at the Water Authority as well, excuse me, and it's been online, and we talked about it here at this Township building, here at a meeting previously. So we didn't receive any comments from the public. It is a very simple plan, and it really does make sense. So if you're agreeable to that, and Joe, if I said that correctly?
Everything's fine. I just want to make sure you're aware, this is, we're only asking for a temporary diversion.
Good point.
Obviously, it's for five years, and we'll reevaluate at the end of five years, and if we still don't need the capacity, then we may be back here. But if, as business and development grows, and we need that capacity, in a matter of months, we can have that plant back online, and we have trigger points in the plan that also, in that five-year period, would enable us to do that as well. Well, would that require board action to put that back online? It will not require board action, because the trigger points and the ability to put it back online is part of the plan, which you're approving.
And I know, Mr. Monroe, it asked the last time you were here, if there's anything you can do about sweetening up the odor over there, because we're going to put some more capacity in.
Well, you're talking about Log College.
Right.
Log College, this is a, this is 100,000 gallons we're adding in capacity of eight million gallon treatment plant, so it's a very minimal amount. gallon treatment plant, so it's a very minimal amount that we're adding. So, it's not going to impact the odors negatively, but I can discuss those issues with the superintendent and see if he can improve things.
Well, I mean, I would say that it made me feel better. I did get a lot of complaints about, a lot of people down there feel like the odor's gotten worse, but it did make me feel better looking at the numbers. I mean, like you just said, 8 million gallon per day facility, it's whatever, around 6 million right now, so it would be 6.15 or something like that.
Yeah, we're diverting 100,000 gallons a day, which is a minimal amount for this type of facility.
It's, does it exceed, does Log College ever exceed its flow? I think I saw a graph back in 2011 which indicated like, you know, maybe two or three times a year where it exceeds its flow.
Well, we have different levels. We have a yearly average, and then we have what's called a three-month average, and we have an organic loading. The last couple of years, we have not exceeded any flows or had any hydraulic issues at the treatment plant. We have some issues in the collection system that we're addressing, but at the treatment facility, we don't have any issues capacity-wise. If we did, DEP would not, would not agree to do this. So, we've met with them, and we've gone over the numbers. We have to report to them yearly what our flows are for the previous year, which we've already done for this year. So, that is monitored very, very strictly by DEP.
Do you know what it's maxed out at, like, over the last two years?
I believe the yearly average for 2015 was in the high 5 million range, and then we have a monthly high, and I believe that was around 9 million gallons, but our, but our capacity on a monthly basis by permit is 13 million gallons.
Okay.
So we have hydraulic capacity through the plant to actually trick 20 million gallons a day.
It's all beyond my pay grade.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
We do not have any hydraulic issues within the plant.
So, I'm sorry.
I did have one other question. So in the next couple of years, too, I mean, we're going to be adding 105 homes, there's going to be the units up on Newtown Road. If we factor that into the process, obviously?
Yes, every year in the Chapter 94, we work to get all of the developments that are under consideration for the next five years, and we have to project flows for the next five years that go into that treatment plant. And those projections have to be within the capacity for us to be able to do this as well, and that's all done in the Chapter 94 report. So yes, we do consider it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else have any questions from Mr. Nolan or comments? I'm seeing none, I'm going to call the question, or call for again motion, the Act, the Plan Amendment for the Closing of the NAWC Sewage Treatment Facility Resolution Number 2016-20.
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further comment from the board? Comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? The chair votes aye.
Joe, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is new business. Consider motion to appoint new township manager. I'm going to pass this to Steve and Mike Bean if they assisted us with the search before the board, before we take the action to board comment.
Sounds good, Mr. Chair.
Well, it looks like we're ready for a new township manager, and I'll turn it over to Mike, and we're excited, and I'm here to help through that transition, and that's very important to the township. And we want to make sure that the new person's successful, we'll welcome him with open arms, and we're already, Mike and I are already planning for his arrival and putting together the list of open items that we have, and we'll work through a very smooth transition. So, I'm excited about it, and it's been a pleasure to serve the board and the community, and looking forward to the next phase for Warminster in bringing in a new manager. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, for the public's edification, the board has been engaged in the process of searching for a township manager for approximately the last eight, nine weeks. The applicant pool, this, for this search was, was healthy. There were 26 applicants for the position. The board interviewed, let's see, six applicants, and ultimately has selected Mr. Greg Schuster, S-C-H-U-S-T-E-R, who is presently a manager in, or township in Monroe County, has been in that position since 2014. In that period of time, he has actually presided over the transfer of a township from second class to first class and balanced the budget, settled a six, major six-party lawsuit, re-engineered and put back on track a large sewage collection system that was in the midst of being installed in the township, developed a capital budget and improvement plan, refinanced the debt, implemented a new website, and at the same time managed to reduce taxes. Prior to that experience, he was an elected official and actually the chief executive of the town of Colchester in Connecticut, and he served in that position for five years. And as he discussed with us during the interview, had many executive functions which are very, very similar to a township manager. Before that, he had a varied career in finance at different levels. Education, he was a graduate of Lehigh University with a Bachelor of Science of Business and Economics, and holds a Master's in Business Administration and MBA from the University of Connecticut. After the interview, we extended him an offer which he did accept. At this point, the recommendation would be for a motion to appoint Greg Schuster as township manager, subject to a successful background check, drug clearance, and the finalization of an appropriate contract with the township manager for board approval.
Okay, so I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, is there, would the board like to weigh in? Comment from the board, because I have a few, but who would like to go first?
I'd like to say, this has been a very long road, and we've been waiting. Love Steve, he's done a very, very good job for us as a new manager. It's something that we really need to bring continuity, cohesiveness, and stability into our township, and I'm very excited with hiring Mr. Schuster, and I would like to give him a very warm welcome to Warminster. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schuster impressed me, and I hope that when everyone gets a chance to meet him, that he'll impress you, too. It's a new chapter, so I'm just very excited about it, and I would like to say, too, this process, you know, is nice working with all five members of the board here. I think it, it went pretty smooth.
Dan, Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, I think he interviewed well. I think he's going to do a really good job. I, and I understand the contract's not finished yet, but I look at the terms of the contract, and I see how we're going to offer $10,000 to relocate him, and then $4,000 from May to August to set him up while he's here in Warminster, and I'm okay with that, per se, but what I'd be more comfortable with is perhaps maybe if he guaranteed he'd be here for X amount of years, I don't know, five years, Mike, or something, and if he doesn't stay here for more than five years, three years, whatever the board decides, he returns that $14,000. I'd be kind of a little more comfortable with that.
We can certainly look, as I told you, we can look to incorporate that in his actual employment contract.
Okay, perfect. I mean, how does the board feel about that?
I, I'll comment on Mr. McPhillips' suggestion. I, when I heard the idea, actually, it's not uncommon. I'd never seen it with a re-low bonus or a re-low fee. I've seen it with signing bonuses. If there's no, if there's no legal impediment, I don't see why we couldn't bake in some sort of protection. I don't know what the appropriate timeframe would be, I'm not a lawyer, but I would support that idea if, if all the parties are amenable.
I would support that idea as well, because if we can work something out with him, it's acceptable to him, to us.
I agree.
I agree.
Do you have any further comments on? Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. You're done?
No, I just, I appreciate everything you've done, Steve. We're going to miss you.
It's going to be a long goodbye. Steve's going to be around for another couple of meetings, so.
We want to work hard to make, I've talked to Mr. Schuster a number of times, and we've already have a planned meeting coming up in two weeks, and he's going to start to get acclimated with the township in a couple of weeks, so. But thank you very much. Much appreciated. I enjoyed working with each of the board members as well. It's been, it's been a very rewarding project. It really has. And as everyone knows, I was hired as the interim manager, and that part of my role is to help in that transition to the new manager, so I'm looking forward to that process as well.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo everybody, and I think there's going to be time where we're going to be able to roast Steve.
Oh, God.
There's going to be a meeting.
Maybe enough material. You're not getting paroled that easy.
Exactly, you know. We've just, we commuted your sentence, but you're not out yet, okay? So we'll do that in a coming meeting. On Mr. Schuster, like, like my fellow board members, I was impressed with his interview. I'd not heard of Greg Schuster before his resume showed up. He was an impressive individual. I was impressed by his professionalism, his willingness to communicate openly, not just with staff, but with residents, his abilities in terms of using technology to communicate, something that's very important to me, and most of all, his passion. I think when everybody gets to meet him and see him, he's very passionate for public service. He's very passionate on a number of issues, some of them that are very germane to what we're dealing with here, and with, Mr. McPhillips has been championing with combating heroin addictions. So I think there's a lot that Mr. Schuster can bring to our town. I look forward to welcoming him to Warminster at the end of May.
I think, yeah, thank you, Crowley. We actually began this search back in November. We did a first round of search where we just didn't come up with a candidate, so we thought, okay, in January, we'll take another run at this. So it's, it's a great relief to me. I'll miss Steve dearly, I will, but it's a great relief to me to have it done because it's, it's been a lot on, on all of us that, that, you know, get these resumes, and it's a difficult decision, and you want to do the right thing for the township, and I honestly believe that we are, and I think we're all in harmony with that. And Mr. Schuster has a young family that he'll be relocating to the area here, which is exciting for him and his family as well, and I'd like to roll out the carpet for him and hope that it works, and he's here for a long time. So with that being said, is there any comment from the public on the motion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Five, zero. Okay, item B. Review sketch plan application for Guerrero HLA Inc., Bucks Bagels, remove and relocation of building on existing site.
Kurt Schaefer. Tracy's going to do a brief introduction, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, I saw Kurt headed right, I saw Kurt headed right for the podium there, so. All right, Ms. Tracy Tackett?
I just wanted to share with you a couple of things. The Planning Commission did review the sketch plan at their last meeting and provided several comments to the applicant. Now, this, as we've talked before, this is a sketch plan, so action is not required from the Board of Supervisors tonight, but it would be helpful to share comments. Couple of things that came up with the Planning Commission. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the Bucks Bagels site. It's very tight, so the Planning Commission was very enthusiastic to see that they're going to remove the existing building and build a new building in the back of the site. Because it's such a small site, there's going to be several variances required, so they will have to head down, down that path. Few issues that did come up with the Planning Commission, circulation is very tight, so there was conversation about maybe possibilities to, to connect that parking lot to some adjacent parcels. And some of the parking to the, to the right side of the building when you're facing it in this picture is a little awkward in getting in and out, so there was some question as to whether or not that would work. So, basically, those were kind of the, the main things brought up by the Planning Commission. There was a question of whether or not this building maybe is a little too big for the site based on some of those other constraints. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Tracy. Good evening. My name is Kurt Schaefer. I'm here as the attorney for the applicant, Guerrero HLA Inc. Mr. Guerrero's with me, as is our design team and our engineer. This is a sketch plan review, as Ms. Tackett indicated. We're looking to get input from the board before we put it into paper and submit a preliminary plan. What you have before you is, on the right, the existing features plan, on the left is the proposed sketch plan. This is the Bucks Bagels location at 1179 York Road. It's Zone C1. The site has about a third of an acre from the rear property line to the ultimate right-of-way line. Existing are the two buildings, the actual sandwich shop that is right in the front of the site, and a smaller storage building that's located on the rear corner of the site. Obviously, as you probably all know, the sandwich shop is located very close to York Road. It creates clear site triangle difficulties, not only for this site, but for the 7-Eleven site adjoining it. Those difficulties are compounded by the fact that this is actually the point in York Road where it curves. So you're actually on a curve with a building in front of you. It's, it's probably a perfect storm for bad site triangles. The site is chock full of non-conformities, just about every area measurement that the zoning ordinance calls out for, and we have to work within those constraints. The proposal, which is the sketch plan you have to the left, is obviously to demo the existing sandwich shop that's located towards the front of the site, and incorporate the existing rear building into a new structure, which will be three levels. It will have a storage basement, the first floor sandwich shop, and a second floor office. The office is not going to be rented out to another entity or tenant. Mr. Guerrero lives in Ivyland, and he just wants someplace where he can conduct his business. He has other businesses in the township besides this. That's not his dining room table. So, one of the issues that we're going to be facing is, of course, all of that square footage gets totaled into our parking calculations. And one of our issues in front of the zoning board, and we're going to have to go to the zoning board, anyone trying to develop this site is going to have to go to the zoning board, is that the basement is storage, the office is occupied by one person, and if we need a parking variance, and we're trying to avoid that, we would ask the zoning board to take those items into consideration as well. As Ms. Tackett discussed, there were some comments coming from the Planning Commission. Yes, the size of the building was an issue for them. That bleeds over into the parking requirements because of the square footage. We are very seriously looking at reducing the size of the building. So when you see this final plan, we're roughing out some sketches right now. The building will probably be about 1,500 square feet smaller than it is right now. The building footprint will also be shrunk a little bit more. One of the comments in front of the Planning Commission was that we proposed a four-foot curb in front of the sandwich shop instead of a required five. I think we can get the required five in. And on the side of the building, the left side of the building, I guess we'll call it the south side, are two parallel stalls and a trash dumpster which admittedly intrudes into the rear yard. We're hoping that by shrinking the building, we can eliminate the parallel stalls because they're not really what the ordinance calls for. Our argument would be that that would be occupied by employees only, so there wouldn't be a lot of issues of in and out and turning around. But once again, as we focus on the shrinking of the, of the building, maybe we can overcome that obstacle. The last issue that we discussed at the Planning Commission that I think is of note is the notion of somehow sharing parking with the face-off circle site adjacent to us and behind us, or perhaps even creating a curb cut in the rear of our site to tie into their driveway and let people who want to exit the site go around through the face-off circle parking area to the traffic light on York Road. A good idea if the owners of Faceoff Circle, which I think is now a bank, agree. At the conclusion of the Planning Commission, I believe that commission took the position that they would have, they would, as represented in the township, contact the owner and broach that subject with them, and I'm, and I appreciate that. I would rather have that request have the imprint of favorability with the township than just me saying, hey, you know, can we put a couple of dozen cars a day on your parking lot? You know, he's going to come back and say we want something for that, I suspect, but maybe if the township enters the request, that number will be a little bit smaller than it otherwise would have been. So that's sort of the general concept of where we want to go, and the issues that we heard about in front of the Planning Commission. And I- And I think what we really want to know tonight is, does the board echo those issues? Are there other issues that maybe the Planning Commission didn't touch on, that this board feels are relevant and that we need to address? As we say, we just want to try to simplify the ultimate submission by addressing issues now.
Let me, I like the idea that you're reducing the square footage, possibly.
We will. It's not a possibility. It's just how much right now.
How would you go about that? Is the garage stayed? Is garage go? How would you eliminate 1,500 square feet? Or what are you thinking?
We're just shrinking the, I mean, basically, we're taking five feet off of the perimeter of the building. Shrinking the upstairs a little bit. I mean, as you saw, the facade is beautiful. It's not very monolithic. It's not something that's going to overpower the site. So we're trying to keep the aesthetics of it. So we're really shrinking the office probably by about half, and then general shrinking the perimeter of the building by about five feet to save some more square footage.
No, all right. I appreciate that. And in terms of, actually, I'm a big proponent of outside seating. I like that idea. I know a lot of people like to eat their bagels outside. But also more towards, you know, we want to create more of a neighborhood walkability type feel in an area that's not conducive to it, but a little more neighborhood type feeling. And I appreciate that point. That's really all I have.
I'm glad. Don Jason?
Yes, yes.
Thanks. Looking at the plans, I'm really, I'm very glad that you are reducing the size of it. It's just too big for that size of the property. And it is on the turn, like you said. If you could get permission from Face-Off to share the parking spaces, it would be much easier to navigate and to get to the light. I think anybody coming in and out of there, it could be difficult because it is on the curve. How were you thinking people would be entering and exiting?
The curb cut, if the site remains standalone without interconnectivity, the curb cut will remain as is. It will not be moved. It will remain the same size.
Okay. Well, again, then, I think it would be, it would be great if you could have a partnership with Face-Off to share their lot and then enter and exit there at the light.
And a Plan B to that, which I don't think I mentioned, was if the interconnectivity is just not going to happen for whatever reason, and the reason would be the owner says, no, I don't want to. The second option would be to explore shared parking. Where the restaurant abuts the Face-Off Circle, it's just a grassy area. It's a bit of a hill, and it goes down to a parking area that is never really occupied when the restaurant is busy. The skating rink is busy in the evenings. And in fact, they park in the restaurant because they don't really have enough parking when they're busy in the evening. But during the day, we could share parking with them if we put a little stairwell between the two sites. So that's sort of Plan B with respect to finding more parking for the site.
Okay, because I think that's a great idea, because I think you don't have, it doesn't seem like you have enough parking. I'm glad that you're reducing the size. It is a beautiful building with a nice facade, will fit nicely in there, and I'm also a big proponent of having outdoor seating. Folks seem to enjoy that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mine's short. The only thing that I would like to add is any time that we can improve curb appeal. I love that, obviously, and I think just by doing this construction is going to improve the curb appeal, obviously, with some of the other businesses that are going to be coming into the area, where they're going to be tearing down old structures, redoing old structures. I definitely like the direction we're going. I guess that's where my, and I know this is tight, I didn't really see much of it in the plans in reference to shrubs and whatnot along.
Yeah, that was a topic we touched on in front of the Planning Commission as well. The ordinance actually requires, I think, a 15-foot buffer on the side and rear yards, and a 30-foot buffer in the front yard because of the residences across the street. Well, you know, clearly, we're not going to be able to put a 30-foot buffer in the front yard or a 420 or 15-foot buffer anywhere else. But one of the things we took from the Planning Commission, one of the things we consider as our marching orders, is to find a way to, we're actually reducing the impervious surface by this. We are adding some grass areas, and we can probably try to figure out a way to put some plantings in there as well.
May I just add real quick? Have the neighbors been contacted with this project, and are they agreeable to it?
I, well, I know we've talked to the owners of the Face-Off and the daycare and office center, but we just had a sketch plan review by the Planning Commission. I don't believe a formal notice for that hearing went out to anyone.
Okay. Thank you.
As I said, there's really no residences anywhere near us, except for those two houses across the street.
What's it at, 500 feet?
500 feet to get notice of a zoning application, I think it is, but maybe behind us, within 500 feet, there are residences. I'm sure behind us, within 500 feet, we might, we might touch those houses on Roberts Road.
What's the timeframe of the project?
We're going to send our engineer to his office tomorrow and start drafting the preliminary plans, and submit them as soon as we can, and we'd like to go forward and get it finished up so we can build it before the winter.
I like the idea that the applicant is taking initiative to improve the property. I think it's worth noting that how much the applicant gives back to the community. The applicant gives back to Little League, soccer, baseball, and I speak myself, but I'm happy to help him out.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I know he's been working on this. This has been in the works for quite some time, so I'm really glad to see it in front of us for review.
Yeah, it's been rumbling around for a while, yeah.
And the same goes for me with Mr. Guerrero. I know he's in the audience tonight, does this as a pillar of the community, just a pillar of Warminster community. Even to the, I believe, the last day of school at Nativity every day, that he sends tons of pizzas over there, so everyone gets pizza for the day. Yeah, just terrific. So I'm really glad to see this coming forward.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I would like it done as quickly as possible, because I love, I love the bagels, so.
Yeah. I hear you there. I'm across the street from this place. I'm there two or three times a week for lunch. All right, so, I mean, if there's any, no other comment, we'll take what we have. I think you sort of echoed the Planning Commission. And what you'll see when we get back to the preliminary plan, will be a smaller building, we'll add some more greenery, and in the interim, we'll see what we can do about interconnectivity between the sites.
Sounds good.
Is there any comment from the public on this sketch? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Okay, I'm going to call Ms. Tackett back up again. Review land development waiver requests for two dugouts and a shed proposed at Nativity of Our Lord Church and School.
Correct. We have received a request for a full waiver from land development. They're proposing two dugouts and a shed at the existing baseball field, and staff is supportive of this, although we do note that from a previous land development application, there's still some landscaping along the two perimeter areas near this, near this site. And staff has been working with the property representatives to contact the neighbors. They're wanting to get some relief from the landscaping that's currently required. So our suggestion was, they need to go talk to the neighbors and make sure that they can provide something that the neighbors are supportive of, and then come back and apply for an amended land development plan. So that's kind of where we're at, and so with that, I'll turn it over to applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Tackett, members of the board. My name is Todd Savaris, Mr. Chairman. I'm here in my capacity as the coordinator for baseball for Nativity CYO. Also present on behalf of Nativity is Mr. Vince DeLuca and Mr. Chris Eckert, who's instrumental in the goings-on at our church and school. They will address any questions the board may have concerning the landscaping issue that Ms. Tackett referred to. I am simply here in furtherance of an application, or I should say, applications for a zoning and building permit that was submitted back on March 11th for the purpose of permitting two dugouts on the Nativity baseball softball field. It's a multipurpose field. It's shared by both the baseball and the softball program, excuse me. The dugouts will be constructed on a concrete slab. The dimensions of that slab is eight feet by 20 feet. It'll be 12 foot in height. In addition to the two dugouts, the proposal also, or the permit applications will also include a proposed 10-by-12 shed. So effectively, we're creating about 400 additional square feet of impervious coverage if you include the stone base of the shed. I was guided administratively, in light of the fact that the proposal technically is an improvement to non-residential land, that land development is technically required, but in light of the diminuteness nature of what's being proposed, that it would be appropriate to request a waiver from both land development as well as a waiver from the otherwise applicable land development waiver fee. So I am respectfully requesting the board consider that request, grant the applicant a waiver of land development along with the associated fee, and permit the building officer to complete his review of the permits and allow these improvements to be constructed.
Any comments?
Yeah. Please correct me if I'm wrong. These improvements are being done in memory of someone we lost?
That's correct.
Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, sure, certainly. Laura Shelly, on behalf of her late husband and the father of her two children, has graciously offered to make a donation, and that donation's in memory of her husband, who was an avid baseball fan. She told me, if possible, he would have had his ashes buried under home plate. So it's been, Ms. Shelly's been gracious and very specific with regard to the intents and purposes of the gift. And obviously, the CYO organization is eager to deploy the monies that she's committed to benefit the field in memory of her late husband in perpetuity.
I, as most of you know, I'm a huge advocate for children's sports, was a coach myself for many years here in the township, and I think this would be a great memorial in his honor, and I certainly would support it.
Thank you very much. Anything further for me?
I just think that Nativity's been doing a lot of good things there, a lot of improvements. We have another applicant who's working on their property, improving their property. Nativity just finished the community center. It's a beautiful, beautiful room, beautiful building, and yeah, it's, I'm happy to support this.
It's a wonderful school. It's a great community. Both of my sons, John, my son John, who's a freshman at Wood, attended there, matriculated from the Nativity School. My son Joseph's a fifth grader there, and it's a wonderful school. It's a wonderful program, and I'm happy to be involved in it.
Will the projects be done before the carnival?
We're hoping, we're hoping, we're hoping. I'm going to be over at Bristol Road, nine o'clock tomorrow morning, if the board looks favorably upon this request. Thank you very much.
I think it's safe to start the car. I am going to call for a motion for waiver of land development request for two dugouts and shed proposed for Nativity of Our Lord Church and School. Is there a motion? Ms. Frescatore, second. Mr. McPhillips, any more?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just clarify that the motion would be to grant the request for waiver of land development and from the waiver of any fees associated with the waiver of land development, so as to permit the applicant to proceed on a simple building permit.
Motion by Ms. Frescatore, second by Mr. McPhillips. Any further comment from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Aye. And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Todd.
Vince just asked about the landscaping plan. We will bring that forward at a meeting, because we have to have a formal approval on the change of the landscaping. So tonight, the board wanted to be assured that you had talked to the residents that were next door, which you have, which was great, so we'll look to amend the landscaping plan at an upcoming meeting. We have to formalize that.
Come on up.
Come on up. Let's talk about it.
My name's Vince DeLuca, obviously with Nativity, and was involved with the community center approvals and the development. Chris Eckert was involved with that, me also, and we spent the time, a week or so ago, to, there are five properties that abut the buffer area that we're talking about modifying. Chris and I met with four of them in one evening. We had a hard time meeting the fifth. He was working night schedule, so I managed to meet him Monday during the day. All five homeowners supported our request, which was basically revising the buffer to put a row of white pines, five or six to seven feet in height, about 15 feet on center. All five property owners asked that we clean, that back area along the fencing has some overgrown brush or whatever. They all asked that we clean that up, which we're agreeable to do, leave room between the planting of the pines and the fencing, that we can run a mower behind there to keep it maintained, which Nativity will do. So we'll be back, we'll submit a revised landscaping plan showing these white pines, 15 feet on center, if township staff agrees, and we'll be back at another meeting to get that, to accomplish that approval, revise, request that approval.
Yep, I'm going to work with Mr. Savona's office to figure out what the mechanism is to facilitate that change. We're going to try to make it as easy as possible, but we need to make sure that we document it, because it was on an approved land development plan. And I want to have Ms. Tackett and Mr. Kennard's office also look at it for final details, just to be assured that we're looking at a plan, because this landscaping plan is a nice one, and we think that it will be viable, but I'm not a landscape person, so I want to make sure that our consultants also look at it. But I think we're really close to what you have.
What I suggested that we propose is what we talked to the homeowners about, and they were in agreement with it. And staff and the board will know that the area we're talking about is a significant distance from the building we built. It's just required because of your ordinance and property lines, so it really has little impact of buffering the existing buildings, but it's required, so.
And we thought it important that Vince meet with the neighbors on this, because it is adjacent to where the dugouts go. So we wanted to make sure that we were being open to all, and we communicated it, and we very much appreciate it.
And we did communicate the dugouts and the shed to the five property owners when we met with them about the buffer, so they know that that request was being made at the board.
And that outreach is very important, very much appreciated, too.
Okay. All right, well, we'll submit a revised landscaping plan. It's really not a record plan.
Yeah, just the revised landscape plan, and then what I would like is, like I was just talking, just in your cover letter, describe for the staff's benefit and everybody else what you just described tonight with meeting with the residents, and then we'll just confirm where the locations are, and that will be probably made part of an exhibit, and we'll modify the condition of approval, which is, you already got a waiver, I think we worked that out before, where the board waived the back requirements for buffering, so we will just modify that again, just the landscape plan. I don't need any other plans.
Okay, we'll submit a revised plan with a letter outlining what we just discussed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
Thank you, Vince.
Okay, next up is item D. Temporary road closure of York and Street roads for Memorial Day Parade, Resolution 2016-18. Mr. Weisner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This we do on an annual basis, and this is necessary for the parade to be held on the road. So we need to pass this resolution to submit to PennDOT so that they give us the permit to have the parade on the road. And at an upcoming meeting, we'll be presenting our donation for holding the parade and also having a proclamation on it. We're looking at the, I think it's either the 5th or the 19th. But today, we want to just do this resolution so that we can submit it to the state.
Can I ask you a quick question related to the parade?
Sure.
Who, I had a group reach out to me about marching in the parade. Who do they contact? Is that the VFW? Do we have any role in that? Who's really?
The VFW is the primary organizer of the parade. We help from a logistical standpoint, just because it's on, you know, it's in the township and part of the town, and we donate. But if you'd like, if you want to forward that name to me, and I can forward it to the VFW. They have a committee that's already established, and they evaluate this.
Yeah, just want to.
That's good. Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, because sometimes, I mean, I know in the past, sometimes, groups that wanted to participate, I don't know if they knew how, and then they just show up in the middle of the parade, crash the parade, yeah. So I want to give everybody the opportunity, because we invite, we invite people to participate. We want people on the parades. We want, we want sports teams and such, so. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it, sir.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion for a resolution for the road closure of York and Street Road for the Memorial Day Parade.
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, second.
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further comment from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next up is item E, the Sterling Act Resolution, 2016-19. Mr. Weisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution originated out of what is known as the Bucks County Association of Township Officials, and they recognized that the Sterling Act, which provides some benefit to the city of Philadelphia and also to Allegheny County over on the other side of the state, for anyone that's working in the city of Philadelphia, the wage tax goes to the city of Philadelphia. There is nothing called, there's no reciprocal relationship with other municipalities. If a resident of Warminster is living in another EIT, or an income tax taxing entity, is working in another township, that township reciprocates with our township and remits the tax to us. So if you're working in a municipality outside of Warminster, your employer So if you're working in a municipality outside of Warminster, your employer will collect the tax from you and send it to the tax collector of that, the EIT tax collector, I should say, of that municipality, and they then forward it to Warminster Township. City of Philadelphia does not do that. They're not, they don't have to do that by the Sterling Act. So basically, this resolution is to ask for an amendment to the Sterling Act so that the city of Philadelphia would reciprocate and send us our portion of the earned income tax. And it goes on for other, you know, there's a couple of other nuances to the law as well. There's a possibility that we would dramatically enhance our earned income tax collections, could be upwards of $400,000. I have not done a detailed analysis on that, but I also throw out the caveat that the city of Philadelphia probably will weigh in on this as well. But we are looking to partner with the other municipalities in Bucks County and to express our concerns and ask that the Sterling Act be revisited and revised so that we can receive a portion of those monies that are associated with Warminster Township, and that's the basics of this resolution.
Okay, well, I'll call the question, then we can comment. Unless you want to comment first, you want to discuss first?
Let's do the motion.
Let's call the question, and then we'll have a discussion. Okay, so I'll call the question for the Sterling Act Resolution, 2016-19.
So moved.
Mr. McPhillips, second.
Second.
Mr. Crowley?
Second.
And so further discussion from the board.
So what this means to Warminster is roughly, we have 1,600 Warminster residents who live in Warminster and work in Philadelphia, so every day, we have 1,600 residents who, either they get in the car, or they go to Warminster train station, and they take the train down, and they go work in Philadelphia, which is a good thing, where people can work in Philadelphia but come back and live in Warminster. The bad thing, as Steve was explaining, is that 1% earned income tax, or roughly $400,000, doesn't make the train ride back to Warminster. That money stays in Philadelphia. That's money that we could use towards our police department, our fire department, we even approve roads. Now, Steve also mentioned that Bicato is involved with this. What Bicato is doing, and it's led by Dan Ratigan from Upper Make and also the mayor of Benzaleum, they're having their legislative committee talk to legislators. I happen to serve on the Bicato Legislative Committee, and I've been talking to state representatives from the lower end, I've been talking to state senators from central Bucks, and they're all on board of it, on board with doing this. In fact, you're gonna, in the House, you're gonna have Scott Petry introduce a bill for this, and then the Senate, Chuck McElhenney and Tommy Thompson, will introduce a bill to reform the Sterling Act. I've been going to state reps, and I've been telling them in your communities that you represent, this is the money that you could capture, and like I said, they're all on board with this. I think this is a really important thing. Is the governor gonna sign it? Who knows? But I think the important thing is that we try and we do that. If you look what's going on in Harrisburg, you know, the big question is, what are the people in central Pennsylvania and western Pennsylvania, what do they think about that? How do they feel about Philadelphia? Who knows? So it may get reformed, we may get, as Steve said, I'll be cautious on that, $400,000 in revenue here to Warminster, but we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree. I mean, I moved up here in 1999, I worked construction. Anytime I'd work in a city, that's $50 a week to $60, between 50 and 60 a week, out of my pay. It's a car payment. I'd rather pay my money to Warminster, I live here, than to the city of Philadelphia, I would. I'm totally in harmony with this.
I agree, I agree, Mr. Chair. I think Warminster deserves their piece of the pie, it sure would help with our deficit, so I say we go for it.
I sound like a broken recorder, yeah. Yeah, I mean, of course, I support this. Mr. McPhillips is exactly right in everything he said. When you think about it, really, Montgomery, Bucks, Chester, Delaware, most of the state really is balanced on the backs of those four counties. We constantly are paying more and more and more and getting less and less and less, not just from the Sterling Act, but from the state in general. So if even in a minor way, we can get something back. $400,000 is one mil of tax revenue, actually, a little bit more than one mil of tax revenue. What that would allow us to do in a town like this, that's another mile of roads, that's a coupled roofs on the library, there's so many things we could do, and yet, the money gets diverted to Philadelphia. Philadelphia can't collect their own property taxes, but they're really gonna take the money from the suburbs. So, you know, I'd like to get a little bit of that back. I'm not optimistic that the governor will look favorably upon this, but I say we try.
And they're taking our residents' money and feeding it into what I consider to be black holes in the city, I do.
Yeah, so it's a matter of, let's, I think, we're united, it's a bipartisan approach that what Warminster residents are paying for should stay here, so.
And I would just add on, back to Bicato, it's Bucks County Association of Township Officials, on May 5th, there's gonna be a panel discussion of all the representatives from all the different townships in Bucks County, and we're gonna talk more about this. So people, right now, we have 17 townships have approved this resolution, other townships have it on their docket to discuss it, but it's gonna be a good time. You guys can make it at the Doylestown Country Club on May 5th, it's well worth it, it's well worth the education you'll receive on this, but yeah.
The only thing I'll add is that, you know, Mr. McPhillips has mentioned Bicato a few times. Do we know if that's on their website? Some information on this?
It is.
So if it is, if you can give their website?
Bicato.org.
Okay.
All right, excellent. If there's any other comment from the board?
Good.
Any comment on this from the public? Come on up.
Andrew Dixon again, 326 Calmia Street. I didn't come here to comment about this, but as it happens, my wife and I moved back to, I grew up in Warminster, lived here on Worthington Drive until 1997, went away to school, came back for a year and a half, and then I moved to the city of Philadelphia where I met my wife, yada, 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 and we were there for 10 years, and then we moved back to Warminster last year, no, 2014, so two years ago. And my wife still works at Temple University, so she's exactly one of the people that you're talking about. So first of all, I guess I wish you guys luck, I do. I would say, though, and I said this to you guys at a meeting that we were at, and I do miss, I, you know, if that doesn't work out, I mean, the city of Philadelphia, of course, is gonna put up its fight.
Of course.
You know, and frankly, having lived in the city of Philadelphia, you know, there are a lot of people who come in and use the city's services every day, and there's something to be said for getting some tax revenue from those people who are in there. The city of Philadelphia does provide, you know, infrastructure that they're using and all this. I know that I personally would be perfectly happy, you know, and I know that, you know, nobody likes to pay taxes, but if they said to us, well, you know what, you still owe your 1% to Warminster for my wife's salary, I pay the 1% because I don't work in Philadelphia, I am just throwing it out there, I'd be perfectly happy to pay the 1, like, if that's the alternative, I'd be perfectly happy to pay the 1% to Warminster on behalf of my wife, but she's not paying right now.
All right, you're right.
Andrew, just to clarify, though, it's, the wage tax in Philadelphia is roughly 3.5%.
I know exactly what it is.
What this is, what this is asking, we're saying that we just want the 1%, so Philadelphia would still collect the 2.5%.
Well, I know, they would get 2 and 1/2, but I mean, you know, and I live in, you know.
It's a matter of fairness.
I understand what you guys are going after, and like I said, good luck. I don't foresee that, I mean, without them going like kicking and screaming, and I understand why. I also take your point about the property tax collection in Philadelphia, holy moly, it's a problem. But having said that, I mean, it is fundamentally unfair, yes, that there are people who are working in Philadelphia, and if they're working someplace else, Warminster would get the money. I think that, all things being equal, Philadelphia needs some of that money, frankly, in ways that, and there are better things that they could be doing to collect it themselves to a certain extent, but on the other hand, there are populations who live in Philadelphia that aren't gonna be super welcome in other places, and Philadelphia provides a home for them, and is a city that provides services to them, and, you know, their tax base isn't the best compared to some of our suburban towns. I know that, I'm not like jumping up and down at the idea of 1% pay cut out of my wife's salary, but I know I'd be willing to do it, and I'd be willing to go around and knock on doors and tell other people, hey, what the hell, let's support our town, so that's all.
With that tax collection, if they had Bobby Loftus down there, they'd be paying.
That's right. I mean, I do feel like it's pretty important, and, you know, that, I think it's, it's, there's certainly an issue of fairness to where we live and the money that we need to earn this town. I'm concerned about all of that, but I also lived in Philadelphia for 10 years, and I understand that as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Justin O'Neller. I need a cook, 911 on the lane. I collect taxes on behalf of municipalities all day long, and until recently, the city of Philadelphia had one person that could issue you a tax bill for lapsed taxes, and it could take six weeks to get a bill. So at one point, just one title clerk, I was holding over $100,000 that I wanted to pay them, but couldn't get a bill. I actually called the mayor's office, and I said, I heard you need some money, and I'd love to pay you, but I can't get a bill out of you, and then I got my bills, which was awesome. It's not our obligation to take care of the city of Philadelphia. Sorry, we're taking care of Bucks County and Warminster. No one asked them to live in Philadelphia, and as far as the infrastructure, we pay for that with our tickets in and out, our 1% more in taxes when we buy something in the city of Philadelphia. That's up to them, I'm not the mother.
I agree with you, Andy. I worked round the clock to have the privilege of living here in Warminster.
My husband's worked there for 31 years.
If I'm the city of Philadelphia to move here, I worked here round the clock for the privilege of living here.
31 years.
And I'd rather support my township that I live in.
Right, my husband's been paying city wage, and it burns, he keeps track of whatever days he's in DC that, so that he doesn't have to pay this, he does.
Plus, there's the fact, I mean, we have a fiduciary responsibility to receive whatever revenue we can.
Absolutely.
With respect to Philadelphia, but they put themselves in this situation.
Charity begins at home.
Exactly.
Yep. So anyways, are there any other comments from the public on the resolution? So I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. To item F, review and consider authorization to advertise the responsible contractor revision to the responsible contractor ordinance, ordinance number 680, and I'd like to comment on that before I hand that over to Mr. Savona. I was here in the audience when this original ordinance was passed. I actually got up and spoke in favor of it. I'm a 33-year member of the Building Trades, and I know what a responsible contractor is, and I know what an irresponsible contractor is, probably better than anyone in this room. However, being a board member here for four years, I have watched this particular ordinance malfunction. In my opinion, it's malfunctioned. When Mr. Savona arrived here in January, and he has vast experience with this ordinance, I asked him, Mr. Savona, would you please take a look at this and see how we can revise this to make it work? I don't want to, I don't want to throw the ordinance out, but I'd like to make it work. So this is what Mr. Savona's come up with in putting it before the board for consideration, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Savona to touch on it.
Sure. So as Mark touched on, ordinance 680 was adopted in January of 2009, with the premise, and all of these ordinances that have been adopted in multitude of communities throughout southeastern Pennsylvania, all have the same sort of intent, and that is to guarantee that contractors who are performing public work projects are qualified, that you don't have, anytime you're publicly bidding and it's the low bid, you always run the risk that the low bidder is not necessarily the best bidder. So because the township code gives us the discretion to award contracts to the lowest qualified and competent bidder, this ordinance expands upon that definition of what a qualified bidder is. The original ordinance, when it was approved in 2009, set the threshold where the provisions of the ordinance would apply at $100,000, and then contained a number of provisions that required, that a contractor was required to go through in order to guarantee that they qualified to be awarded the contract. Like many things, before you start to implement the ordinance, things that may seem like they will work don't necessarily work in practice. Ordinances of this nature have been around for about 10 years now in many communities that I've worked with. As we've gone on in the progression of actually implementing the ordinance, the same sort of issues arise. Issues arise in really two areas. One, the threshold. At $100,000, the contract threshold is actually lower than it probably should be if, to apply to contractors that are going to meet the qualifications of all of the training requirements and the multitude of certifications that we require. And in practice, in other communities, I've found that a more realistic number is actually somewhere around $350,000. At $350,000, you're going to catch any major building projects where, those are the contracts that bidders that will possess these qualifications are going to be looking to bid on, and by adjusting that number up, you're not sacrificing receiving competent bids from competent contractors at contracts that are less than $350,000. As a matter of fact, it opens up the field of opportunity for many other contractors, maybe even local contractors, who might not meet necessarily all of the requirements, but are nevertheless competent. They may not qualify, but now could do so. The second area where the ordinance was really cumbersome, and I'm sure Mr. Kennard can attest to this, was the timeline within which the township could award a contract. Traditionally, from the time you open the bids, you make a determination under general public bidding, what the lowest bidder is, assuming that the references check out and the engineer is satisfied, professionals are satisfied the contractor meets the normal public bidding requirements, you could award the contract at the next regular meeting after you opened the bids. Bids are typically only good for 60 days. Under this ordinance, under the old ordinance, making a determination as to who the apparent low bidder is is only the first step in a very lengthy process that's kind of unwieldy and takes a long time. The first step under this ordinance is to issue a notice of intent to award, and then that triggers a 30-day review period, followed by a 15-day posting period, followed by another review period, and then at the end of the day, from the time the board opens the bids and awards what they think is a contract, you're a full two months, possibly a quarter of the year before you can actually sign the contract and start the work. Once upon a time, with less electronic communication and less availability of information on the internet to qualify contractors, that may have been necessary, but what we found is that you can actually trim that down, and this ordinance does that. It requires that the contractor submit all of the certification documents with their bid packets, so that the minute the bids are open, Craig and I can start to evaluate those. The timeframes to do that are shortened dramatically, so that from the time that the board issues a notice of intent, you're talking about five days or 10 days as opposed to 30 days and 15 days. So I believe that this ordinance actually brings you up to date with what the most current regulations are in this area. It respects the intent of the ordinance, it doesn't take away any protections from the township that you've had in place for the last number of years, but it does modify them slightly in order to make it more workable and a less cumbersome document. So my recommendation is that the board authorize the advertisement of this ordinance to amend ordinance 680, and we'll have it advertised and prepared for one of your meetings in May.
We want to do the motion, or would you like to have discussion first, or is it, okay to do the motion?
Motion.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Savona, to advertise the revision to the responsible contractor ordinance, ordinance number 680. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Monroe. Discussion from the board.
I just want to be sure that any contracts under the $350,000 mark, that we would get responsible contracts, and what are the guidelines for that?
We would still submit them, anytime you put a contract out for actual public bidding, there are a number of specifications that we set in the instructions to bidders that detail what we want them to qualify for in order to be qualified to bid on the contract. Just being the low bidder isn't always a guarantee that you're going to be the contract winner. Being the low bidder still subjects you to reference checks and general, you know, research on the background of that contractor, takes into account our experience with those contractors and other municipalities' experience with the contractors, and any of those things that can trigger a red flag would enable us to disqualify that bidder under any circumstances. I know Craig's probably done it, I've done it numerous times over the last 20 years. It's not unusual to disqualify a bidder because he's just not qualified, or they're not capable of performing the contract, and a little bit of research would help you to be able to determine that. That doesn't necessarily require us to rise to the level of the full panoply of requirements that this ordinance has. So I think it's a healthy balance. This exact, or a very, very similar ordinance has been adopted by another community I represent in Montgomery County, it's been working beautifully, the threshold seems to be just where it needs to be. A lot of the paving projects and other smaller jobs, roof projects, things like that, that would otherwise have tilted over into the higher limit, now are able to be awarded with a lot less aggravation and a lot less delay.
We have several contractors here in Warminster who live here and their businesses are here, and under the current ordinance are prohibited from doing the work, and as their representative And as their representative on this board, I don't think it's fair to them either.
I like your comment, Mr. Chair, and I was going to say thank you to Mr. Savona for clarifying that for me. And I like the idea that our local businesses will have a chance to bid in for these different jobs.
Smaller jobs.
Yes, I like that. Thank you.
In most cases, we'll get a performance bond as well.
Yes.
And that will ensure that the work is done correctly.
My brother-in-law's been a contractor here in warm winter for thirty years and much appreciates.
Yeah, it's just the right thing to do.
Yes.
And one other comment that the board doesn't usually see is, if someone is not qualified, we're so far down, forty-five days, and then we start all over again, and I've got to be the bearer of bad news, or usually I send Karen Holshizer to be the bearer of bad news.
We were thinking about the end of November last year.
And it really is, it's been going on for, Mark's totally right, so not everybody gets to see that painful part behind the scenes, but then you have to say, "No, you're not qualified, now we've got to go back." And really, besides the threshold, I think that's the second biggest benefit, is you're going to know and move on, which does happen regardless of whether they fall under this threshold or not.
The community I just referenced, we had a municipal building renovation project where the first contract we let under this ordinance was the demolition of the existing building, just tore it down to steel and concrete. And the bids were just over the threshold, they were in three, four, five hundred thousand dollars. We were able to eliminate two of the bidders within days because all of the certification documents were included in the original bid packet. So, the first thing the engineer did was pull that, start looking through the certification, found out they had been debarred in one place and had been thrown off another job somewhere else, immediately threw those bids out, and it didn't delay the process at all, unlike what Craig describes where you don't get this information until after the contract's open and then you're days and days into the process. This is just a lot, Craig will thank me at the end of the day that this makes things a lot easier to administer.
The only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, in some townships with more chaotic boards, you know, they react to these things in a knee-jerk reaction kind of way, and I really appreciate the approach here with this. You know, it's appreciated and I think it's definitely the way to go.
Okay. Is there any further comment from the board on the motion? Is there any comment?
One other comment I will make, just because sometimes it's confused and just for the public's information, this only applies to township contracts. This is not going to make you have to go out to go through some process if you're awarding private contracts. This doesn't involve private individuals or private businesses at all. These are only for public contracts being bid by the township.
Is there any comment from the public? See none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Excellent. Professionals reports, township manager, Mr. Weisner.
I think we have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed item G.
Oh gee.
Let that happen, that's a big one too.
Oh gee gee.
Consider motion to extend JP Mascaro trash hauling contract for two years as authorized by the current contract. I'll hand that over to Mr. Savona. Mr. Weisner, whichever one wants to take it.
Just very briefly, I received a request from Al DiGennaro, who is counsel for JP Mascaro. As the board will recall, we are in the fifth year of your existing trash contract. The contract, when it was originally bid, provided for a five-year base contract and two one-year options. Those prices were all competitively bid, and Mascaro was determined to be by far the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The hauler has asked us to consider awarding those two extensions at this time so as to settle the issue early and not have to worry about later in the year when we may have to go back out to bid in order to obtain a contract for a hauler for next year. So...
Mr. Weisner, any comment?
I think that this is a good idea. It is a very cumbersome process to do this bid. It's costly as well, costs the township money to do. I think the provisions for this two-year extension are usually, if something is going terribly, terribly wrong, it gives you an option to not have such a long contract. But changing this is also a disruption to, could be a disruption to the residents. So, I'm cognizant of that as well. And also, with the new township manager coming on board, it just seems like it's the right thing to do. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we wrote this last contract the same way and extended it as well. So, there are some, as Mascaro has worked through the last several years, they've come to know the township very well, and that's a benefit to the township because they're efficient in the way that they collect the trash, which is helpful to our residents.
And I think there was...
Not to say that there aren't complaints, and there would be with any contractor. It's a, you know, a big endeavor to collect trash for thirty-two thousand residents.
And there was a reduction of cost to the residents at one point through the, a few years back. Mr. Savona would know more on that.
Yeah, I think you, there was...
I think you were here then.
There was a closure of the recycling center where we had contracted with, for the recyclables to go. Under this contract, the township retains ownership of the recycling materials, so the hauler collects them but then takes them to the recycling center, and then we conceivably could be paid. The recycling market has changed a lot over the last six, seven years. And the recycling center that we had the contract with had closed, and I think we negotiated a recycling contract with Mascaro that ended up, when you do all the voodoo economics, ended up being a reduction, a net reduction to the residents of, I think, twenty dollars per bill.
Something like that, yeah, I recall. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend JP Mascaro trash hauling contract for two years as authorized by the current contract. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any further discussion from the board?
No, I mean, in general, I'm pleased with Mascaro's service and response. You know, it's funny, on the way here, I got another complaint about the trash cans ending up in the middle of the road. We'll stay on them about that, but in general, I think they've done a good enough job. They offer the service at a price that is not onerous to our residents, and as long as they remain receptive to improving the customer service, I'm on board with them.
And I agree with you, and as far as from an administrative standpoint, which Steve had to say that we have a new manager coming on board, Mr. Schuster, and his first order of business would have to be to dive into this, and it's a monumental task, and I for one don't want to put that type of burden on him where it's not warranted. So, I'm...
I agree, they do a good job for the money that the residents pay. All in all, I think people are satisfied, and it's going to save the township money by doing so. I think it's a good idea.
And I think that what the chairman just indicated, not only in reference to the headache of having to deal with this issue, it's also, correct me if I'm wrong, it's an expensive process putting it out to bid, right? So, I mean, we're saving taxpayers' money just from having to prevent from doing that.
Absolutely.
Is there any further comment from the board on the motion? Any comment from the public?
Somebody was talking. Good evening, Bobby Loftus, warm winter tax clerk. Since I will be doing the billing for this, is the price staying the same?
I believe that it does in the contract.
We'd have to go back and double check. It'll be whatever was bid for in the original contract. I don't have the numbers on file.
That sounds the same.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Any other comment from the public? See none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Now, we can move on to the chairman's report.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I missed my estimate. First thing I would like to announce is the Navy is having their open house regarding the PFOA and PFAS issues that have arisen here and at the Willow Grove Base as well. I'd like to announce that that is going to be on May 24th and May 25th, and it's going to be at the Horsum Township Community Center. The times of the open house are going to be May 24th, which is a Tuesday, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and Wednesday, May 25th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, I'd encourage all those that are interested in this issue to attend that open house. There'll be representatives from the EPA, the Navy, the water authorities, and I will be attending as well to learn on behalf of the township. So, that is item number one. I also want to, it was a busy, busy month. Catherine McGovern has just done a great job putting together all of the renewal applications that are necessary for our liquor license over at warm, at the Five Ponds Golf Course, and I think we've got everything in there now. And that is a cumbersome task to do so, and she did a great job. So, I appreciate all her efforts there. York and Bristol Roads, York and Bristol Road, the intersection will be repaved soon, and there'll be some realignment also with that intersection. We do have plans that are available here at the township if you would like to see them. I'm going to try to post them on our website. They are very, very large plans and they're difficult to see, but we'll try to post them on the website as well. That construction work should start within a month or two. Hard to predict, it's a very big project, so the exact timing is difficult, but PennDOT's been open to giving us the plans. And I'm happy to report, I believe that we're going to be able to make it a concrete intersection. This was just recently decided. Joe Veltan and I were at a meeting, and Joe encouraged that as well. Of course, a concrete intersection will have a much longer useful life, especially with large tractor trailers that go through that intersection. You know, when you look at the intersection of Street and York Road, you can see where the, when a tractor trailer tries to stop, it puts a lot of pressure on the road and moves the asphalt. So, having a concrete intersection is a big deal. Joe's going to be the coordinator for the township on that project. He's contacted all the emergency services and recently coordinated a meeting with the school district as well to make sure that the buses reroute the right way. There'll be detour signs that come up soon. It's going to be a challenge, you know, but it's going to bring a great improvement to the area, so we want to make sure that it does happen. Our road paving contracts will be open. Craig Kennard's office has done a great job, Karen Holshizer, in putting the bid packages together.
April 22nd, the bids will be open.
Tomorrow. Yep, tomorrow, three o'clock. And so, looking forward to that, and thank Karen for all our hard work in that regard. Eric Hines said we have a new public works director, started just this week on Monday. So, Eric will be at the bid opening tomorrow as well, and he will help us coordinate our road paving projects for this year. Eric has twenty-five years' experience working for Allen Myers. Twenty-five, I think since it's one of his first main jobs, he started there as a labor and worked all the way up to become lead of their paving crews. He led six paving crews at Allen Myers before accepting this job. So, we welcome him aboard. Really looking forward to working with Eric on that project. I'm going to turn it over to Tracy for this particular item. The bus shelter, we talked about at the last meeting, and it's been talked about at the planning commission. And the board at the last meeting directed staff to do some more research in that regard. Tracy has been coordinating that effort. So, Tracy, can you give us an update on what's happened so far? A lot has happened, believe it or not.
Sure. Yes, the Archbishop Woods students continue to be moving forward. They're working with an architect, Rich Luce, who's also on our planning commission. He's offered to help them with some of the building details. Karen Holshizer and myself went out to the site and kind of looked at the feasibility of putting in a sidewalk, and it does look feasible to go from the intersection to the parking lot there toward Mike's Bar and Grill. I met earlier this week, I guess it is, with the students and Mr. McMahon from Centerpoint, and Centerpoint Shopping Center is very interested in being a partner in this, and they're very supportive, so that was pretty significant. And staff is working on some code updates that we had talked about last month that would be required. And we also, our new traffic engineer, Joe Fiaco, has been working with the developer of Rosemore Donut property, and they've been dealing with PennDOT on trying to do some mitigation for the traffic impacts. And he's been able to get PennDOT to agree that approximately sixteen thousand dollars could be provided to improvements elsewhere in the township. And the contractor there has suggested that possibly they would be interested in constructing the sidewalk, the segment of the sidewalk where the bus shelter is proposed. So, it's still conceptual at this point, but that could be a possibility. So, we'll certainly try to keep that conversation going and see if that's a possibility.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if you want me to mention the Economic Development Committee?
Sure, please.
The last Economic Development Committee meeting did have a representative from a sign company, Catalyst. I'm not sure what else.
Catalyst.
Catalyst something.
Outdoor.
And, yeah, an outdoor signage company, and he had suggested that maybe as part of a bigger project that he's interested in doing at the intersection of Street and York, that maybe he could contribute to the bus shelter as well. You know, and that's certainly a possibility, that might be more long-term. So, we want to keep moving with, you know, all the things that we have going on now and see if we can keep this going forward. So, if there's any, you know, feedback or comments that you want to share with me, please let me know, and we'll make sure we're on track with your wishes.
Glad to hear that it's moving along.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. There's some motivated kids, for sure.
Very bright futures, I suspect.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you, Tracy. Also, in Tracy's department, the new filing system has been installed, and I've had an opportunity to go down and look at it. That's a very cramped corridor down there. We used every, or Tracy, every inch that she could to get the new filing system in, and it's loaded. All of, the whole thing is loaded, and it is really a welcome addition down there. I'm sure that all the employees are going to appreciate it as well. So, thank you for those efforts, and Larry's as well. I know Larry was helpful in our crew also in jockeying all of the old filing cabinets in and out and all that. It was a cumbersome process, but good work. Traffic signals, Pete Carter and Mike Mendick do a great job. We had a meeting here the other day with our new public works director. Pete came in as well, and we met with Armor and Electric, who does our installations whenever there's an accident. And Megan's office coordinates, as risk management person, she also coordinates all of the subrogation. So, when a traffic signal, there's an accident in the township, we go to our insurance carrier and we hope to recover that from whoever caused the accident. So, from Chief Donnelly's office, we'll receive the notice on the accident, and then we will attempt to get restitution from that person or who's ever responsible. A traffic signal costs a lot of money. The biggest one, I think, is about ninety thousand dollars of what we replaced, I think, was the highest one. So, coordinating all that effort is a cumbersome process. Pete Carter does a great job with that.
Were you short for that if somebody...
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. Megan coordinates all that. So, what, it's called through subrogation. So, the vehicle insurance for whoever struck the pole, we go against that insurance to get recuperated. We have a deductible, but it's a monumental task. We'd five traffic signals go down, and we hope that that's the last for the next five years, because the year before, we had, you know, a couple minor accidents, but five in one year, we actually had a tractor tailor go around the corner, hit one of our traffic signals, and pull it down the road. So, Megan, thank you for all your efforts in making sure that the township gets that money back. So, it's a big deal. Wawa will be meeting with, hopefully with the residents on the 26th. I had committed to the residents that I would share them a draft of what we hope to accomplish through this process, and Mike and I are working on that draft right now, and we're hopeful to get, I think, a meeting, we're trying for next Tuesday, I think. And then, we would bring it back to the board, we'd get the comments from the residents. Mr. Kennard's office has had an opportunity to look at the height bar, and we believe that, I think we got a good detail on a height bar, that we're going to share that with the residents as well. We want to get their comments on that. But we were looking for enough of a deterrent to actually keep people from going into that back road who were not supposed to be there. Everyone else, we want them to be able to get back through that road, so.
And in addition to the height bar, there's also going to be concrete bollards for trucks jumping the curb. So, I got six different drawings, or seven, actually, site plan showing location with six different details on that. So, Steve received that from Wawa, I just finished reviewing it, so I think we're ready to go.
Next review, we'll send it out to the residents, and that's a very good point. That's kind of a belt and suspenders. The bollards also help as a visual deterrent, because when you look at something that's narrow coming into the road, and if you're a truck driver, you're going to pay very close attention when you see a bollard. When you're a car, you're not. But a truck driver will actually have to pay attention to it. So, I think that was a welcome addition too. So, thanks for all your efforts there too, Craig. Finance reports and year-end closeout. Ginny's office, again, this is the busy time of year for these guys, they're really working hard, and appreciate all their efforts in that. Putting together our financial statements is a monumental task, it's a big booklet, so. And then, the last item that I want to mention is Tracy Tackett and I are going to be meeting with Joe Fiaco, our traffic engineer. We're looking at a planned revision for all of Street, parking plan detail revision that we hope to bring forward to you in the next coming months. That's my report. No questions?
Any questions for the township manager?
I do.
Right ahead.
All right. This might be more for group, but first, I was curious how everything went with our our first year of having the Brad Fox 5K on York Road.
That's a, thank you. You know what? I think it went very well. We learned a lot through the process, but I think it did go very well. Weather was decent, a little bit of rain, little sprinkles out there. But, Chief Donnelly was out there. Joe, I think you were out there running, if I'm not mistaken. He was right out there in front going.
Finish line.
And Chairman McKee and I were out there as well.
I was at the unofficial finish line to Madison Tavern afterwards. And it was, and it was quite festive in there for the afternoon too. Everyone from the run came back. They had a tent in the parking lot. It was really good.
But, the two gentlemen in the back of the room were instrumental in helping get that all coordinated with Darren Mann and they are the reason why it went well. We always take back and learn from every event and next year, we'll build on it and even make it better.
Terrific. Okay, now, I'm gonna hit you with just a couple of questions, 'cause these are the ones that've been coming to me. I've already asked others about these. People in this town want their tacos and they want their chicken. Where's, where are we at with Taco Bell? Do you have any idea how close we are to that being started?
I'm gonna turn that over to either Craig or Tracy. I, I'm not sure where.
I was told, actually.
Plans were signed today.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Is that one of the plans that were in the back?
Should be.
I'm not sure. There's six projects back there. I think those are gonna be, I'll be signing those tomorrow. If not, they're in the pile. There are so many, I lost track. But, I know they're ready to go and the plans are finally done. We didn't receive the construction plans, but the record plans are the first thing to get done and then the construction set. So, I think they're ready to go.
The building reviewer told me today, his review of the Taco Bell plans is complete and they're approved. So, we need to do a pre-construction meeting, get that scheduled. So, they could potentially be breaking ground soon.
Okay, that's good. The other one, Chick-fil-A?
I haven't really heard much from them lately.
I can give an update on that. We just finished a review. I talked to the developer earlier in the week and they had some technical issues still to work through, nothing earth-shattering. But, Chick-fil-A continues to push what they want with their detail, with their layout, down to the type of paint for the parking spaces. And, I'm just getting, you know, it wears you down a little bit to balance the township specs with that. But, be honest with you, we're down to that kinda stuff, so they're almost ready to go. I think Chick-fil-A is the one obviously pushing to start construction versus the other tenants or at the other buildings. So, I'm gonna guess a pre-con meeting probably at the end of May. You're gonna see a bunch of pre-con meetings coming up here or hear about them towards the end of May.
And the last one, I think I've been telling people, and I think correctly, is the Dunkin' Donuts that has never been.
Yeah, I was gonna touch. That's the number three frequently asked question, Rosemore Donuts.
That's held up with PennDOT right now, correct?
Yes, and Tracy touched on, they had to do, and I don't remember the technical term, but they had to do some type of community mitigation and that's where I think they're gonna, I saw a very long detailed plan of everybody's, Tracy's spearheadedness, but very detailed what PennDOT will sign off on and where the money goes. I guess it's $16,000, you said. Part of falls on us then, the township then, to get permits. But, all of that's contingent, they can't do anything until that's agreed upon and documented, so. But however, I was advised that PennDOT is not happy with the, with the driveways. I don't know if Tracy got that word yet, but I just verbally heard that they will not sign on in the design. They may be back in front of you, believe it or not, with modifications.
So, the takeaway is Taco Bell and Chick-fil-A are getting towards the finish line and Dunkin' Donuts is still a little bit.
They unfortunately, you do a lot of informal means with PennDOT, but until they do their review and they sign off.
It's not time to make the donuts.
Yeah. Yeah, they got a little carried away with themselves on that one.
Yes, I agree.
It's township, we signed off and everything's been sitting there. In fact, I washed my hands of it and PennDOT just won't sign off.
Oh, yeah, they've had a rough road over there.
They have.
On that project with the state authorities. So, I appreciate you all humoring me on those updates and allowing that information to get out to the public. Thank you.
Any other questions for township manager? All right, let's move on to the solicitors' report. Mr. Savona?
I've done, I think, enough talking this evening. One thing I would highlight for the board, we, in the wake of Governor Wolf's signing of the medical marijuana bill on Sunday, medical marijuana is coming to the Commonwealth. We are working on a set of regulations to incorporate into your zoning ordinance. Because, the federal government still treats prescription cannabis as a Schedule I narcotic, it's not permitted to be distributed to the normal pharmacy network. So, we can't rely on Rite Aid or CVS to dispense with that kind of a medication. So, the state statute provides for the creation of dispensaries where it would be dispensed independent of a normal pharmacy. With the creation of that kind of a facility, unless we create a definition and a use classification in the zoning ordinance that would accommodate it, it would be lumped into the general retail store category, which is not something that we want to see happen. The state law also provides, in addition to dispensaries, which would sell directly to the patients that have the prescriptions, there are provisions that create cultivation centers or areas where the product is grown. Those are not permitted to be owned by the same people. They have to be owned separately and there are a number of restrictions on where those, the rules to go with how you, how you set up a facility like that. Likewise, that's a new use that is not currently present in our zoning ordinance. Because this is imminent and because I don't want the township to be behind the eight ball in terms of regulating for it, my office has been working on an ordinance that would create a use classification for those and place them in appropriate places in the township that would incorporate all the state law requirements and a number of security provisions and other provisions that are necessary to make sure that we appropriately regulate those and so we don't find them cropping up all throughout the retail or commercial areas. In addition, we are working in the same zoning ordinance amendment to create some regulations to address the sober living facilities that are becoming more and more prevalent throughout the lower part of Bucks County. Anyone who's read anything in the intelligencer over the last five days, they've done a five-day series of articles discussing those facilities and what they are and what they do. Our ordinance is generally pretty good in terms of how we treat group homes, but as a number of communities in Bucks have done, Falls Township, Ben Salem Township, there is a separate niche for this kind of a facility, which we haven't addressed. So, we're taking steps to create appropriate regulations for those as well. So, I imagine we'll be bringing that forward to the board for your consideration to start that process, to adopt the zoning amendment sometime next month. We have a number of other cleanup items that I think we will include in that. If you're gonna do a zoning amendment, you might as well do as much as we can. It costs money, it takes time. So, we've been talking to Ellen and I and Mr. Kennard and I were speaking this evening. We'll try to sort of throw that all into a sort of an omnibus 2016 zoning ordinance update and we'll have more to talk about as that proceeds. Other than that, just to let you know, we are moving a number of projects to development agreements this, this month alone. We did five distinct sets of development agreements for the projects at 366 Hawthorne, the Police and Fire Federal Credit Union and all three portions of the station at Bucks County East. So, those are in various stages of execution. I think Police and Fire has signed and returned those agreements. I have some last-minute language to work out with the attorneys for Petrucci on the station at Bucks East and the 366 Hawthorne agreement. I haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming those were acceptable. So, those I expect to be falling into the queue relatively soon, so as promised, we can get you guys out there doing ground breakings and ribbon cuttings.
Kissing babies.
Kissing babies, yeah. That too. And that's it.
Oh, question. Codification.
Codification. So, Mr. Weisner and I have been in communication with General Code. It had been some time since we had an update from them with respect to where they were price-wise to finish the codification. I think they owe Steve an update to complete that task. And, I received today, actually, a very large and unwieldy sort of document, which represents what I think was a sort of an ongoing list of changes that my predecessor had been making to the codification. I'm gonna go through that over the next couple of weeks, talk to Mr. Kennard, talk to Mr. Weisner, figure out of those changes, if we are set that all of them have to be included, then we will fold them into the codification that General Code will then republish for us. And then, we can start to move that through the process of adoption, which, because of some nuances in Pennsylvania law, anytime we do a codification approval, I always take it through the process that the MPC provides for the adoption of a zoning or saldo, simply and only because there is law that says if there was some snafu or some procedural default in the adoption of an ordinance, zoning ordinance or other MPC ordinance, that could void the ordinance ab initio, which means that a developer comes along 10 years from now and challenges an ordinance that was adopted previously. If the procedure wasn't followed to the letter, we could end up with an unraveled zoning ordinance. So, when we do a massive project like a codification, we take the whole thing through the process so you know as of that date that the entire thing has been clean and we don't have to worry about what happened five, 10 years ago. So, I would expect, my goal is to try to have the codification in final form and to have a final version back from General Code, hopefully not later than maybe July or August, so we can put that to bed long before the end of the year.
We did make, as Mike mentioned, we had, we, I think the conversation we had with Kelly, I think it is, right, or from General Code, a while back and on your.
Catherine.
Catherine, thank you. On your agendas, we list the ordinance numbers and you'll see the next ordinance is 729. The document that Mike is talking about actually brings it all the way up to 727. So, we even went all the way up to where we're at right now. And Catherine McGovern from my office is gonna be looking at three ordinances that they drew our attention to that don't sink. And, we think we'll be able to get that resolved by next week and get the information back to General Code on that. So, that, I think, will bring us to the next phase of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Savona? Okay, move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Kennard, everyone took your thunder already, man.
I've got nothing left, except I should've checked my notes and I know Tracy was trying to help me out. Taco Bell is in the back room there for you guys to sign, so I have another set and I'm not sure what project it is. But, as Mike mentioned, yeah, I have six record plans. And, when I say record plans, it's usually sheets one through four of a larger set for each project. So, then development agrees, development agreements come along. I did get word related to agreements that we just were working on, actually, today, Mr. Savona and I were talking, Mr. Weisner, your station at Bucks County East for Petrucci, Transit Ryan Development, and also Septa Lot Improvements in Jacksonville Plaza. I've been working a lot with their staff and they're trying to get all their permits and wrapped up, ready to go at the beginning of June. Ideally, they'd love to have a pre-con meeting. Depends on their PennDOT HOP. It's quite a large set of documents for the Jacksonville Road Improvements. The signal alone's, I think, was 350,000, 300,000.
330.
330. It's over a million dollars' worth of work. So, still a lot of stuff to work out with PennDOT, but if they hit a snag there, we'll work with them. They're getting their MPDS permit for the site work and that, that's, that's been a big undertaking to get them to the finish line, but they're still shooting for June. Really, we touched on all the other projects. The one thing I'd like to mention is the Police and Fire Credit Union, and maybe the residents aren't aware of this, but staff, I think the board actually was a condition, they're also putting up a height bar. I don't know if we've mentioned that.
Good point. Is it gonna be approved for Wawa?
Everything's exactly the same. In fact, they tried to get a little carried away with trying to describe everything to the detail, as I'm still trying to make sure we have everything worked out with Wawa. So, they revised the notes at the last minute. That's when the record plans that are being signed. And, they're gonna match anything that Wawa does as far as the fence and have their own height bar, so you can't sneak out and come out the bank and near the CVS. So, that was something that I think we did not mention before, that is part of their approval. And, they did work, they worked very well with the staff on that. So, that's all I have. I think we touched on all the other ones. If anybody has any questions.
Anything for Mr. Kennard? Okay, we'll move on to number nine, the Township Manager announcement of upcoming agenda items. And, we are going to meet on May the 5th, correct?
We are, yes. We're hoping for a short meeting though. Single demile. We'll try for a short agenda.
How do we do that? Patty's Day and single demile. Poor planning.
Oh, boy.
Lay down the chair.
Yeah, take full blame.
I did it on purpose so that we would have a short meeting.
Okay, that's good. When Dan had talked about the picado thing on single demile, I'm thinking to myself, hmm, maybe they'll have margaritas there. And then, I'm thinking, we got a meeting that night.
Grouts for dismissal, manager.
We are gonna have a meeting.
Yeah, grouts for dismissal.
You're fired.
30 days, you're gone.
So, May 5th, as Chairman McKee just mentioned, we'll have a meeting here, Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It, right now, doesn't look like a very, very long agenda, but there are a couple important items that are on it. Memorial Day Parade proclamation, we hope to have at that meeting. We are also trying to recognize the Archbishop Wood Women's Basketball Team. And Gary Zamora from Archbishop Wood is going to get back to us as to whether he would like to come on the 5th or the 19th. So, we're looking forward to that. Let's see. We're gonna also revise the library board duties. Been working with Peggy Lindner and the library board and we got a good draft of outlining exactly what their duties are. So, we'll hope to bring that forward to the meeting on the 5th. And, also, document disposal resolution. We have been working diligently, Tracy's office as well, on document disposal. We've had a lot of old boxes of documents down in the basement. And actually, there was a flood down there. When I got here last year and we went down into the basement, the floor was all mud because there had been a flood down there. So, many of the boxes were even wet. But, we have gone through and thrown away duplicates, not originals, but many, many duplicates. When past supervisors would transition out, we'd get boxes and boxes and boxes of information that didn't really need to come back to the township, because in most cases, it was all duplicates. They were all down there, but we didn't know that until we actually went through them. So, Megan and Catherine, when I come into the office and there's nobody in the back office, they're usually down in the basement trying to get that stuff organized. Monumental task and we're making a lot of progress. And Catherine is putting together a document disposal resolution that we hope to have on for next month, or next meeting. Karen Holshizer from Craig's office is also gonna present the MS4 TDML presentation. She had made this presentation to the board a little while ago and at that presentation, she announced that we would be meeting with other Bucks County or other municipalities that are in the same watershed. She's made some updates as a result of that. So, she's gonna come here and make a presentation on that.
Okay.
So, that's that. Road paving bids will be on the 5th as well. At the bottom of the agenda that everyone has in the audience are a list of other meetings that we have that are coming up, including the zoning hearing board. That is simply a residential application that's coming up. The municipal authority is gonna be meeting on the 9th. Library board and all the other, the meetings are there, listed at the bottom. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is public comment. Residents have an opportunity to comment on any item, maximum five minutes.
I'm sorry I was so late getting here, but I was working, so I can give you some nice checks tomorrow. Bobby Lottis, Warminster Tax Collector. I wanted to remind the residents that next Friday, April 29th, is the last day to pay their township and county taxes at a 2% discount. I will be open this Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00 to collect taxes. And then, next Thursday and Friday, I will be open from 9:00 in the morning to 6:30 at night. And you're getting two very nice checks tomorrow.
Thank you, Bobby. We always appreciate.
I commented earlier, you weren't here yet.
I was still working.
But, since you moved over to Centennial Road, I live down the street. I see your car there round the clock. It's dark out, you park under the light, 'cause it's dark and I call. Everything all right in there? Yeah, I'm still working. So, I appreciate it. I know what you're doing over there.
You're getting a good check tomorrow.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks, Bobby.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Gonna move on to supervisor's comment, Ms. Frescatore.
I'd like to give a big thanks to all our professionals, Greg, Mike, Steve and all your staff, but especially a big thank you to Steve Weisner. I know that you're preparing for the new Township Supervisor, Township Manager and you have been very gracious to our new supervisors in helping us transition. We wanna give a very big thanks to you for that. Also, I'd like to congratulate Villanova for their NCAA men's basketball championship. that. Also, I'd like to congratulate Villanova for their NCAA men's basketball championship. I'm a big Nova fan. So go Nova. Also, Flyers won their first game here in the series, and maybe they'll win every one after that. So go Flyers. Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's it.
All right, Mr. Bonreau.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, yeah. I wanna bring up something that I, we see a lot of complaints about. And I know the chief, you've been doing everything you can do. And Mike, we talked earlier, I know on your end, you're gonna be working on it. And that's the problem with prostitution here in Warminster. If you don't think there's not a problem with this, I would invite you to look on Craig's List. I bring this up for, because, one, we shouldn't allow this type of behavior here in Warminster. Two, other communities are working on this. And my fear is mitigating the problem there. And my fear is that it's gonna increase this type of activity here in our township. And three, is illegal activity goes along with this type of activity, prostitution. But I think that's something, time that this board starts talking about it, either we're serious about it or we're not serious about it. I think we are serious about it. And Mike, we had a good discussion for the meeting. And I think it's time that we're gonna take a strong approach to this and try to reduce, if not get rid of, this problem in our township.
The problem that Mr. McPhillips is referring to is there are, one of our neighboring townships has adopted recently a set of regulations, also in their zoning ordinance, to deal with massage parlors. There is a growing segment of that market, not all of them, but some of them are indeed, a lot of municipalities are having trouble with those becoming places where there's prostitution or even some human trafficking. As we discussed before the meeting, there are existing state statutes on the books, and I'm sure the chief is, and his department are doing everything that they can do. Going forward, we are gonna take a look at, we've gotten copies of the Upper South Hamptons ordinances. We're gonna take a look at folding some of those regulations into the ordinance that we're gonna propose to amend the zoning ordinance so that we can do everything we can to strengthen up our local statutes.
Hey, while you're on it, can I ask you a question? Someone was in here a previous meeting about blue-eyed hookah bar.
Yes, hookah bar.
Any activity or have we done anything to enforce that as well?
We have. The chief has been, the police department has been very active, actually, at the blue-eyed hookah bar. Tracy's office is also looking into the zoning regulations. We've actually had a discussion at our legal and engineering meeting to determine, to ensure or better ensure that the proper zoning is in place and what avenues of enforcement we have to ensure that the public's protected. But most of the effort has been by our police department to ensure that they're following the law. And that is what's very important. So we appreciate all their efforts there.
All right. Mr. McPhillips, you done?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, just wanna remind everybody, Tuesday is primary election day in Pennsylvania. In Warminster, our polling places remain the same as they were in November, correct? No changes? Please get out there. Oftentimes, it's been said that in presidential years, Pennsylvania doesn't always get to matter in the primary vote. Well, it definitely matters this year, and on both sides of the ticket, I would say. So please, please get out there and vote. Your vote does matter, it does count this year. And I hope to see you there on Tuesday. Also, just wanna comment quickly on, earlier when Mr. Weisner was giving your financial statements, and everything's trending up and revenues are trending up, business transfers, real estate transfers. You know, about two years ago, we, as a board, were saying, hey, Warminster's open for business. And it was a great slogan at the time. But a lot of work had to go in to actually going from where we were to where we are, we're currently on a path. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that Steve, you, Tracy, your staff, Mr. Kennard, Mr. Savona, Mrs. Eberle before him, there's a lot of people who played a role in starting to get our processes and procedures go in the right direction. And then we had to have leadership to start developing a vision. And I have to give a big hat tip to Mr. McPhillips, who went out to other townships and see how they did economic development. And I might be the most vocal, and I might be able to put some nice words to it. But we are only seeing the success because of the hard work of all those people involved. And I just wanna say thank you. Obviously, the job isn't done yet, but we're in a much better place. We're just getting started. We're in a much better place. We're attracting this new business. Something we're gonna focus on, and I know that Mr. McPhillips has been a big proponent of it, is now that we're attracting this new business, working with our existing businesses and helping them overcome their challenges. So I just wanna thank everybody, my fellow board members here, former board members, you know, like Tom Panzer, Leo Quinn, Wayne McCullough, Scott DeRosa. Everybody played a role in this. And the advantage will be is that we will have more revenue streams. We hopefully won't have to raise taxes because businesses and new income supplement what we're bringing in. And that's been the goal all the time, is to keep the burden off our residents and allow our economic redevelopment to take the forefront. I'm just really pleased with everybody's hard work, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. And just to further that comment, the real estate transfer tax that I had mentioned about, direct result of that, a lot of that economic development activity. Because when a land development plan gets approved, many times, the property changes hands multiple times. So that is a benefit to us.
Right. And I can even see it in the housing market, in the residential housing market in town. Because we're all, you know, all of us own homes, we kinda keep an eye on it. I don't wanna go anywhere, but I'm always curious. And I'm starting to see not only the houses that were kinda stalled in the market starting to move, I'm seeing a lot of, all over the township, every neighborhood, a lot of money being put into renovations, upgrades. It's a type of investment in the community that a vibrant community, a middle-class, blue-collar community like us, really says, hey, we're going somewhere. We're not gonna fall into the economic disrepair that you saw some of the counties in different parts, some of the towns in different parts of the county do. We're gonna, you know, keep going forward. And where we go, I don't know. It's gonna be this board and a whole lot of volunteers will help us determine what our path is gonna be. But we're on the right path.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. I have a couple of comments. This past week, I had the privilege, along with all my fellow board members, to attend the PSATS conference up in Hershey, which is the State Association of Township Officials. And it's a terrific conference. For me, I get to sit and I spend hours with all these township officials from our surrounding townships. And just to network with them and talk to them about what they have going on in their townships, there's all kinds of educational opportunity there that we take advantage of. And it's a terrific conference, and it's a privilege to go there and represent Warminster. So it was really good. I also wanted to, and I was derelict in my duty at the beginning of the meeting, I did not recognize Wayne McCullough and Rich Lewis were in the room. I always like to recognize when our alumnus-
What's that?
Rich, yeah, and Rich Lewis was in the room. And yeah, and finally, you know, I always like to send out my condolences to my fellow music fans. And my day was ruined today when I heard this morning on the death and passing of Prince. He liked David Bowie recently, I think, was like a real rock star. The man could play 20 instruments. He wrote all his own music, played every instrument on all his albums, could dance better than Michael Jackson. What a huge loss in the entertainment business. But yeah, and I listened to him all day today. But my condolences to my fellow music fans. And that's all I have. So I'll take a motion with adjournment.
Motion.
All right.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Third.